Welcome to everyone, we're going to get started. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, January 28th, 2020. We're going to start the meeting with a moment of silence. As everyone knows, Commissioner Portun passed over the weekend on Saturday night. And so, we've all talked at length about his service to the county and, you know, his legacy here. And so, we wanted to recognize his service. There is a ceremony that will take place on Monday at the Convention Center. It will be in the junior ballroom. There is a visitation period from 10:00 to noon, and then there will be a service from noon to 1:00. So everyone, from the public, everyone is invited, all the Todd Portun fans, which there are many of. And so, please feel free to attend that. But let's, at this moment, take a moment of silence. Thank you. I have asked facilities to give us an update. We are renaming the building, the Todd B. Portun Center for County Government, which is a bit of a mouthful. And so, they said they had to go get the letters done and mount them, so we're looking at a couple of months. But I did want to provide that update because I was anxious to get that moving. And so, it is moving, but it is going to take a minute. So we'll get to that when we get to it. But anyway, it's just such a significant passing, a significant loss to the community. So thank you for your indulgence. And then Nate Jones, obviously Judge Nate Jones passed as well. And that ceremony is Thursday. And we've had a request from Commissioner Summer Odomas to bump our meeting back so that we can attend the service, which is at noon on Thursday. So we will do that instead of starting at 1:00. I should tell the clerk this. Instead of starting at 1:00, we'll start at 2:00 to give us a time to attend that and then get to the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yeah, because it's a staff meeting. Yeah? That's only, no. Okay. So we're going to get into our agenda items. We do have a couple exec sessions, but before that, we are going to hear some updated information relative to the Heroin Coalition. So the Heroin Coalition is a collaboration between prevention, treatment, law enforcement, public health, the business community, the faith community. And so, everyone sits at the same table at the same time to talk about how we save lives and get people into treatment and long-term recovery in Hamilton County. That has always been the goal of the Coalition. We are, I think, in our fourth or fifth year. I inherited this when I came on to the Commission three years ago. And it is one of the most rewarding and dynamic things, I think, that I've been involved with because of the collaborative nature of the work and the fact that all the experts are sitting at the table. So it's really been a powerful thing to be part of. So as we've moved through the work, we have tried to figure out how we best do our work and what's the best strategic investment by way of the county and where are the partnerships. And so, we will issue an annual report in February, so within about a month. We do it on an annual basis just to update the community as to what the work looks like and what the trends are and what we're seeing in the community. And there are some shifts going on right now, so that's forthcoming. But prior to that, we got an update from the University of Cincinnati Research Arm, who is doing research related to the quick response teams that we all said we wanted to have countywide in Hamilton County. Remember, they started in Colrain Township, great model. We knew we were having a positive impact. And so, now this Commission decided to have a countywide effort where the entire county is part of this effort. But we knew we also needed to evaluate the impact. And so, that's kind of what today's presentation is about. And then we will follow up with that with a quick presentation about the LEAD program, which is a pre-arrest diversion program. Again, this Commission advanced this idea that maybe, instead of incarcerating people who suffer from addiction and mental health issues, we can redirect them into treatment and treat that person with dignity and also just have a more impactful effect on their lives as opposed to straight-out incarceration and then what. So anyway, that's what these two presentations are about today. It's kind of the precursor to what we're going to hear in February. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Director of the Heroin Coalition, Megan Gosme.
Thank you. So yeah, thank you so much, Commissioners, for inviting me to present today and for the Coalition to present on the work that we've been doing. I'm excited because this is my first opportunity to really speak to you since my onboarding in October. So today, we do have two different presentations like Commissioner Drew House mentioned. And essentially, this is a way for us to update you on initiatives that we, as a Coalition, proposed to the county commissioners and that you approved. So we have Dr. Sarah Mancheck from the University of Cincinnati to report on our countywide quick response team activity. So we have about 21 months of activity that she's going to be reporting on, as well as Trina Jackson from the Office of Reentry, who's going to give an update on our LEAD program, so law enforcement assisted diversion. So like the Commissioner mentioned, low-level misdemeanor offenses that we hope to divert and get these individuals into treatment. So just kind of wanted to come up and kind of give that precursor of what these presentations were about, introduce myself, and now I'd like to introduce Dr. Sarah Mancheck.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thanks for having me. So I'm here today to just briefly go over our preliminary findings of the evaluation of the QRT. To date, we still have several months to go, so just keep in mind that they are preliminary.
Can I, so I'm going to do just a little bit of an overview on the QRT and what it is? Or are you doing that? All right, all right. I'll leave it to you then. I think sometimes we assume everybody knows what we're talking about when we say QRT, and not everyone knows what we're talking about.
I can do that, sure. Absolutely. So the, I'll flip and I'll come back. How about that? Well, okay, maybe not. Okay. The quick response team is a partnership between law enforcement and treatment, Addiction Service Council, Services Council, and Talbert House are the main treatment agencies involved in this QRT, the countywide QRT. What they do is they go out and provide assertive outreach to individuals who recently had a non-fatal overdose. They try to do that within about a week of that non-fatal overdose and get them connected to treatment services. So they are physically going out and knocking on doors of these individuals or their family members and doing everything that they possibly can to try to find them. So if they're not there at the home address or their listed home address, like I said, they're trying to reach out to family, they're using phone, they're using social media to try to do that. So this project is funded by a BJA grant that is going to be ending here in September 2020. And so, it's been going on for about a year and a half. We went live April 2018. That is, that's when they started to actually go out to people's houses and provide assertive outreach and connection to treatment. So they go out two days a week at present. It started with just kind of two sides of Hamilton County. They just refer to it as East and West. It included all parts of Hamilton County except Colrain, which has its own QRT, and Districts 1 and 3. However, more recently, in the fall, they partnered with Talbert House and now also covered Districts 1 and 3. Individuals are eligible for the QRT intervention if they are on the Hamilton County overdose list. They live and reside in the targeted jurisdiction, so they can't be somebody who resides over in Kentucky, for example, and if they have some method of reaching them. So the quick response team needs to be able to find them somehow. And like I said, they deploy every resource that they can to try to locate these individuals. They're networking. I've witnessed it firsthand. They network with family, friends, old places of business, last-known addresses, neighbors, things like that. They work really, really hard to try to find these individuals. So why do we have to have an evaluation? It's always a good idea to evaluate work that you're doing because you want to make sure that you are investing your resources in the right things and to find out how you can tweak or change that intervention to do better going forward. So obviously, the first question that everyone wants to know is, does it work? And so, that's my job. That's Corey Haberman and my job to come in and evaluate that using a bunch of different sources of data. But we thought that we would add to the literature, which is actually very, very small in terms of the effectiveness of QRTs. It's a fairly new model, so there's not much out there. So we thought we would try our best to dig in a little bit deeper, get inside that black box of this program and figure out if it does work, how? On what outcomes specifically? Does it work on the main outcome that people are interested in, that connection to services, to treatment? Does it work on more distal outcomes, like re-overdose or even re-arrest? If so, if it does work, for whom does it work? So we'll be analyzing some demographic data to check that out as well down the road. To date, we've been doing ongoing data analysis on data that's been provided to us by Addiction Services Council, and they enter a lot of the data points that we require into Core Data Systems, which has been a really lovely way to keep everything organized and safe, protected, confidential. And in there, we've got client, just some basic client demographic information as well as their main outcomes at present. So at present would be whenever we draw down that data. So the main outcomes that I'll be presenting to you today are either connected to treatment, so the individual was actually physically connected to treatment. In many cases, that means actual drop-off at the Engagement Center or another treatment agency, or work and showing up to an appointment with Addiction Service Council or Talbert House or another treatment provider, that they were referred to treatment is another outcome. And by referral, I'm just not talking, they handed the person a piece of paper and said, hey, you should call this number. This is a very assertive referral. They have gone to great lengths to reach out to the agency where they are referring the client to, giving them the agency, the client's name, you know, relevant information, when the client plans to be there, sets up an appointment, and make sure that the client has a means to get to that appointment. So it's a pretty engaged referral. Then the other outcomes are already engaged. So they may knock on a door and say, we're the QRT for Hamilton County, we're here to help, how can we help you? And the person may say, look, I actually, I'm already in treatment, or I have a treatment provider, have someone I can go to, but thanks. In which case, the QRT just encourages them to get back with their treatment provider. A refusal is somebody who just, it's obvious what it stands for, somebody who just is not ready to engage with services and says, no, thank you. Ongoing follow-up, these are individuals who the QRT is an active follow-up with, they're trying to reach out with them, they've established a contact with them, but they're trying to get them motivated and engaged to get them connected to treatment. And then finally, there's a group unable to contact. So despite all of their efforts and even having, you know, some way to contact them, so they've, you know, tried all the avenues that I've told you about, that they still just can't find these individuals. And they make three, at least three, good concerted efforts to try to reach out to these individuals in different ways, shapes, and forms over the span of several weeks. So we also have some other data that we can get from the Core Data System that's provided to us by Addiction Services Council, including the number of contacts and the time it takes to get a contact or referral to get engaged in treatment. I won't be providing those data today, but I will at the final report. In addition to those main outcomes, again, because those are the primary outcome for the QRT, we're also looking at some other things. So we are conducting ride-alongs on about a quarterly basis where either Dr. Haberman or myself go along with the QRT. We observe everything that happens, we take meticulous notes about our observations, and we're providing that information back to the Heroin Coalition so that they have some more rich qualitative data about the process of the QRT. I will say, and I think you can attest because you said the other day that you've also seen this in action, this is something to observe, for sure, to see how hard this very small group of individuals works to find these individuals who have had an overdose. They are driving all over the county. They spend the entire day in the car, knocking on doors, you know, while they're in the car, they're calling. And then when they go back to their offices, the individuals who work for the treatment agencies are still reaching out. So they put in a lot of time and effort. So it's good to get this qualitative data to document that because there's no other real place that we can get that. We're also going to be administering in this final year of the QRT evaluation, client satisfaction surveys. We're just ironing out the last details about that with the team, but we will be administering them, that means folks here at UCI, not the actual individuals providing the services, just getting some feedback about their experience with the QRT. But more importantly, for those who were connected or referred to treatment, try to get inside the black box of what happens after. So how long they stay in treatment, what kinds of services they got, et cetera. And then finally, we'll be getting some arrest data for the county. We'll be looking just kind of pre-post arrest rates in targeted areas for very specific offenses that would be typical offenses you may see committed by individuals who have a substance use addiction. We'll also be doing some comparisons between the treatment group, that is, the individuals connected or referred to treatment, as compared to refusals, people who they weren't able to contact, and people who are already engaged in services. So I just wanted to give you a sense of sort of the workload trajectory that they've encountered since they started doing active outreach. You can see at its peak, we had, we're in the high 60s, very low 70s for some months. That's a lot of individuals to try to find and track down in a given month. I'm going to show you two slides that look very similar. One is just for the past year, 2019 outcomes, that's this slide, and the next slide is for the whole duration of the grant. It changes ever so slightly, but I just wanted to make sure you had all the numbers. So I will be sure to share this via PDF with the Coalition, and then she can pass it on. But I'll just go ahead and do the full follow-up period. So these are all the different types of outcomes that I mentioned to you that people can have. You can see that there, in this time period, there's been 795 people who were referred to the QRT who were eligible for services. Recall the eligibility criteria that I mentioned before. And of those individuals, 212 were connected or referred to services by the QRT. If we count in the denominator of that, the 405 people that they were unable to contact, we have a success rate of 27%. I'm not sure that that does justice or is a fair representation of their success rate, but I wanted to make sure that I was thorough and presented that. So if we eliminate the folks in the red box, because the QRT actually never had the opportunity to contact them because they weren't able to speak with them directly, we have a 54% success rate. For those of you who are not familiar with social science research or kind of the treatment literature, this is actually pretty good. So it's promising. We have a ways to go with all of the different pieces of the evaluation, but I have just a few more pieces of data to show you, just so you have a general understanding. These are the individuals who, this is everybody, right, who is referred and eligible for services. You can see that the bulk of individuals who they're reaching or who are eligible and referred are between the ages of 25 and 49, greater percent of males. And then finally, we have a little bit of information on repeated overdose. So that's more of a distal outcome, so it's important to keep that in mind is because it is a distal outcome, a lot can happen in an individual's life after that initial contact with the QRT. So it's not necessarily the case that we're most concerned with this particular outcome, but we wanted to measure it as well. So we can see, these are all the cases who are eligible and received an outreach or contact attempt. These are overdose incidents that occurred after the initial referral to the QRT, and there were 64 total to date. 57 people, but 64 total. And that's all we've got. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, we can turn it over to the next.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, your final outcomes or research will be available for the report in February.
The project will be ongoing at that point.
But you'll have more information rolling into that annual report. Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. Just curious. All right, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the work that everyone is doing and also the information you presented. Does a QRT have a component of mental health? The team, do they have a mental health professional that goes out also?
Not this particular QRT. These are trained addiction service providers specifically. So some of them may have a mental health background from their training, but it's largely, the focus is on addiction.
And I understand that, but we also know that mental health is a big, you know, component of the overdose situation. So I just wondered, maybe down the line, you may consider a mental health professional on the team?
I'll pass it on.
Huh?
I'll pass it on.
So the grant is focused on addiction, and that is why you see that being the focus of the quick response team. I think they are capturing people with mental illness issues. However, the outcomes of the grant are very specific to people who have overdosed, and those are the only ones that are captured here in the quick response, just for clarification sake.
I will say, for the individuals that the Addiction Services Council, for example, if they're the ones who end up taking that individual in for services, they do a full assessment and they make sure to assess for mental health issues, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments?
Good afternoon. Just thank you for your work and for the information, and I look forward to the report in April. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the information. So to follow up then on this, we've got another initiative, the LEAD program, that is coming out of the Coalition. It's pre-arrest diversion. This also is funded through a grant, and we have a pilot program in conjunction with the City of Cincinnati happening to see if we can divert folks appropriately from jail into treatment services. So Trina Jackson is here from our Office of Reentry to give us the details about the kickoff of the LEAD program.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm excited about this project because it is not something that is in every city, but it is in several, and we don't have anything like this in Ohio. So the LEAD initiative stands for Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, and the goal really is to divert people that are suffering from chronic mental illness, homelessness, or addiction from the criminal justice system. And if you look at our jail population, a lot of the people that are cycling in and out of the jail are people that are suffering from those issues. So this is, it's innovative, and it's an opportunity to do a couple of things, you know, give people the treatment that they need as well as reduce the jail population because these are people that really shouldn't be incarcerated. So we're partnering with the City of Cincinnati and Cincinnati Police Department to make this happen. When I mention those national models, there's 38 of them, but we are getting a lot of support from the group in Albany as well as Seattle. So they are really providing a lot of technical assistance for us. And so, how does all this happen? So I'll just kind of give you a picture. The police officer, Cincinnati Police Department encounters someone, and I'll just make this up, they're sleeping in front of Kroger's, right? And so, they're homeless, and instead of taking them, you know, booking them and taking them and get them into that justice system, they, there's a warm handoff, put it that way, with our coordinators. And so, once that warm handoff happens, the coordinators, I'm sorry, case managers, actually employ this harm reduction model so that they're addressing the issues that lead them to actions that threaten public safety and their own safety. And so, we're not asking them as case managers to become abstinent from any type of drug issue. We're not asking them, you know, to address that first. We want to know what's driving that addiction issue or that mental health issue, and how do we address that? And so, in turn, we expect that to impact the things that they're doing that causes public safety or threatens public safety and their own safety. So the warm handoff happens, and they are now a part of LEAD. They receive this case management as long as they will accept it. Once that happens, we will be tracking them. You know, we want to know if, one, they're getting the treatment that they need, but we also need to know, is that reducing recidivism? So that's what success looks like for this program. You know, are we reducing recidivism in Hamilton County? As far as what the team looks like, we will have four employees for LEAD. There will be an outreach coordinator who will actually accept the referrals from the police. We will have a senior case manager who will actually be kind of overseeing the case management activities that are happening, and then we'll have two case managers. And this will be a team that's, you know, very close-knit because they're going to have to work together and they're going to have to work with the police. So there will be a really strong relationship between these case managers and the police because, you know, there's, no case is going to be the same. You know, no client is going to be the same, and they'll have different circumstances that will have to be addressed, and they'll have to be addressed individually, and we'll have to do it based on that harm reduction model. So everyone has to come together for this person. So it allows us to really have a good partnership with the city and CPD to address this issue. We hope to start actually in March. So we filled two positions, it looks like, so the next two positions we're still working on. But hopefully, we will have those last two positions filled by the end of this month, or not this month, but the beginning of February, middle of February, and we can get started in March. I'm trying to think, did I leave anything out?
Did you tell us the geography of the pilot?
I did not. That's a good. So the focus area is District 1 and the Central Business District. So, and it's a pilot project, so of course, we couldn't cover, you know, all of the area, you know, Hamilton County yet, and we can't cover, you know, all of the City of Cincinnati yet. But starting with the District 1 and Central Business District is good because that's where, you know, a lot of this activity is happening anyway, you know? So, you know, we've got the people that are homeless, people that are there on the street, and so we need to get them off the street and get them the treatment that they need. I'm trying to think, did I leave anything else out? Where they'll be located. So the LEAD office will actually be located at Jobs and Family Services. It will be on the first floor, and the hours that we operate is a little different because we'll be receiving, you know, the referrals from Cincinnati Police Department. We're expecting to have about 60 to 70 clients for the year. We don't want to overwhelm ourselves right off the bat, so we're hoping for 60 to 70 clients for the year. That means that we can accept referrals from the police two days a week. And the other times, you know, we'll be keeping track of our clients, case managers will be working with their clients during the day. So the time that we'll be receiving or accepting referrals is a 1:00 to 9:00 PM shift, like the second shift that the police are working, those two days a week.
And one last question, the timeframe then for this initiative?
Yes. So we have about a year left on the grant, and then hopefully, we'll be extending the time for the grant. So it'll probably be a two-year project. That's what we're expecting, a two-year project.
And these are federal dollars that we went for and received for the program?
Yes, absolutely. It was a $500,000 grant that the county received for this.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam President. And you received the grant, you're also supplementing through your own budget some of the employees' understanding?
Yeah, one of the employees, the senior case manager, is the one that we're supplementing, the Reentry office.
Very good. And I like what you said about a warm handoff. I mean, that's a great way to move forward with the people that need it the most, so I thank you for that. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi there. I would like for you to define warm handoff.
Warm handoff.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Right. So when the police has that person in custody, a case manager can either meet the police officer in the community where maybe things have transpired, or meet the police officer at the police department, or wherever they decide to meet. So once that happens, during that time, the police officer has some paperwork to fill out, the case manager does, but the case manager will take that person, they'll do an assessment really quickly, determine if there's like emergency needs that they have, like they have to be met right then. If there isn't, or whatever it is, they address it. And then they'll either come to our LEAD office, or they'll take them to wherever they need to go. Maybe they need to go to UCI for a psych evaluation, maybe they need to go just to a warm place to sleep. You know, that's what this grant will allow us to do.
So the person is not handcuffed and the person is not taken to jail?
They're handcuffed for police safety, but once the warm handoff occurs, that's over.
I see.
Yeah, they don't go to jail, though. Yeah.
And so, the Engagement Center is probably, so we have an Engagement Center where individuals can go and get an assessment, it's like a triage, and so they can go get an assessment and then have this warm handoff happen after that. So sometimes there is that step in between where, instead of going So sometimes there is that step in between, where instead of going directly to a treatment facility, they go to the engagement center, and then the folks at the engagement center figure out what is the most appropriate, because, you know, some of it's outpatient, some of it's residential. It just depends on the needs of the individual.
Right, right. And we're relying on the resources in the community to support these clients. So the relationships that we already have will be calling on more heavily to support them, and to support them fairly rapidly, basically.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So again, annual report, when's it coming out, Megan?
Yeah, so we're hoping to have the annual report out by the end of next month, and that'll kind of give a better overview of all the work that the steering committee is doing in their kind of own individual committees, you know, treatment, prevention, law enforcement, faith community, business community, and that'll also outline some of the stuff that the coalition's working on in terms of grants. We'll also kind of, that's when we'll debut our rebrand, because we are rebranding to, will now be and soon be known as the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, so we'll no longer be the Heroin Coalition. It's, we got a lot of community feedback, and it's a way for us to kind of give a better kind of comprehensive overview of all the work that we do as a coalition for the opioid epidemic, not just heroin. So that's an opportunity for us to, we'll kind of roll that out by the end of next month. And, yeah, so as well, at that time, we'll have a little bit more information in regards to overdose numbers, deaths, and recidivism, and as well as different, you know, if it's emergency department visits, 911 calls. And we'll have a better idea of that once Hamilton County Public Health publishes their annual report as well, which will have the full 2019 information. So, yes, but thank you so much for having us today to present, and just two of the initiatives that the coalition's working on, and we look forward to working together in 2020.
Yeah, thank you, Megan.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. That concludes the regular agenda items. Is there anything else before we go into executive session?
I have nothing.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
All right, very good. Then I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to R.C. Section 121.22-G4 to conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions concerning employee compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and an executive session pursuant to R.C. Section 121.22-G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney regarding MSD.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.